Orders, I guess it's six oh seven. Um, this meeting is being escorted and.
So I would make a motion to accept the minutes from our June 19 meeting, your open session, and.
Second half.
Yeah, that doesn't go both.
Uh, those who made the second day to accept the minutes from regular meeting on Wednesday, June 19, 2019, and executive session on Wednesday, June 19, 2019. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can we shut the air system off so everybody can hear better?
Yeah, all right.
Yeah.
What did you say?
No, I'm looking at Rick, he doesn't look.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. Two announcements. Uh, one is town offices will be closed on July 3rd, uh, excuse me, July 4th, Thursday, July 4th. Um, and we have an invitation, uh, from the governor's office to attend the groundbreaking for the permanent Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall in Fall River on Tuesday, July 2nd at 3:00 P.M. New business, Gary Foley is here to speak with the board about the cemetery.
You know, like a lot of people in town, we've got a terrible, terrible grub problem at the lower cemetery. Um, top patches as big as this room now that are like moon dust, there's nothing left. Um, so I contacted TruGreen out of Franklin, contacted a couple, they were the best. Um, they will come down and treat it for $862, I thought was pretty reasonable. Now, I put down over $800 of grubex ourselves, and it was like Flintstones vitamins. They, I mean, it just, they, you know, just grew crazy. So I didn't figure that was too bad. Um, then they'll come back in the fall and aerate and oversee all the bad spots. And that was at a cost of $1,368. So the grand total would be $2,230. I'm not positive, I mean, I think we can swing the 862, I just don't think out of my budget, I can swing the whole tab. Um, I'd be more than willing to meet anybody or the group or individuals down there to show you, it's pretty, it's pretty evident. Um, I guess it started last year, but as you may or may not know, I was laid up all last year and I wasn't aware of it. And as soon as I get down there this spring, it was like, and it's growing fast. And now, of course, the skunks and the moles are down there too, digging it up. So I just wanted to make the board aware and see if there was some way that, going to help us out with that and get this treatment done and get it aerated and seeded in the fall.
I, I wonder what the Board of Health thinks of this.
We're not involved in drugs.
No, I mean, uh, putting all this stuff down, it's gonna be, it's gonna be hurt, definitely.
Well, I'm thinking, you're holding a company that's licensed.
What is the name of that company?
TruGreen, T-R-U-Green.
Does it dissipate from the ground to a certain point?
Yes, and they'll, they actually prefer rain after they spray. It's actually, the first treatment is two parts, they'll go to the spots that are real, real bad, which is, again, quite a bit. They'll spray that with a grub killer, for lack of a better term, but then they'll spray the entire cemetery with a preventative, which should, in theory, keep them from coming back. And then, like I said, they'll come back in the fall, they'll aerate the entire lower cemetery, except for the rear, the rear so far, knock on wood, is doing okay. But the, the whole front section, left and right, they'll come down and aerate that and oversee it.
What would it cost to put milky spore down?
Someone had mentioned that to me just recently, and I really don't, I didn't, that I didn't look into it. I did not look into that. But like I said, it's, it's getting to be, it's at a critical stage now, we're losing it quick. And we tried, we did, you know, we did what we could do and it was, it was a waste, it was unfortunately a waste of a lot of money, but.
Well, it wasn't a waste, I mean, if it had worked, it would have been.
Well, exactly, exactly. And I had no reason to think it wouldn't.
Right.
You know, I mean, we applied it, you know, according to the instructions and everything was fine, but it did, um, we recently had a burial and, um, there was a handout, it was cremation burial, and the fellow called me up that night and he said, every shovel full of dirt I took was loaded with grubs. He said it was that bad.
So you said you think you have the 862 through the initial, but you're worried about the 1368?
Right, and I, and I was joking, but I do, I would like to talk to the.
Hold on, see if I can hear it.
No, I know you can hear it, no. Um, but I really would like your, you guys' opinion too, if you can.
I'm okay with, I'm on the voice.
Tom?
I have a question for Gary.
Yep.
Um, do you have the money in this year's account for the 862?
It's close, I, I'm already going ahead and approving the 862 because even if I, if I don't have it before the end, I don't think they're gonna get there before the end of June anyway, so we won't be invoiced until.
Yeah, but my thoughts are, is the earmark the money you have now, rather than have it ended up going in the free cash? So if you have $862 now, you can tell the guy and sign a contract for him to come in.
Right.
At an appointment at some point.
Right.
But using this year's money.
Well, that's, right now, that is the plan, Tom, I've actually gone and, and done, I've gone that far, because I knew I could, you know, handle that much.
So you don't have the $1,300?
Well, you know, when they come and do it, it may, it'll be in there, but it's, you know, we work on a, pretty much a shoestring budget, and I know that, that being said, we may have it when they do it in the fall, but it's gonna be a shortage at the other end, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
It's just, that's a chunk of our budget.
I guess where I was going with this is, uh, first of all, curiosity, um, the other thing is, is, um, well, the way things have been going in town, normally I'd say something about the reserve account, but I don't really wanna make any comments about that. Maybe at some point, um, you might want to address the, the reserve account. I know personally, if it came before the thing, I'm highly voting favor of having the money, but I'm only one person anymore, so, I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's more or less, you know, it's kind of like a heads up, because like I say, if they do it in the fall, yeah, so probably will have that money, but it's not like we have $1,400 at the end of the year, you know, so I know there's gonna be, at some point, it's gonna come into play.
And with the situation as bad, as bad as it is, they think they can remedy it?
They have assured me they can.
Is there a guarantee, Gary, would they come back?
Uh, I, you know, I've got the whole thing under, do you print that out, Kevin? I know I.
That's something we would look at.
Yeah.
Because that's, I don't wanna, I wouldn't think we would wanna go ahead and then say, well.
No, the only thing I've approved, like I said, because I know I can pay that, is to have them come down, because I need to do something right now, I just can't wait.
They, they're moving from sections to sections, and where they are, there's no grass, the grass is gone.
So you wanna do the 862 right away?
Right.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm good with that, but like I said, I'm just concerned that I'm gonna be.
Talk about the other money.
Right.
Quite a few years ago, Pertler was, on Con, and there was a resident that really caused an uproar. So a case like this, I know they're in charge of the cemetery, but it is town property, I really think they should be able to selectmen to authorize this chemical going down.
Um, and will it be posted that there are chemicals on, that they will put something, you know, little flags or something, um, until it's safe to go in there?
And from what I've been told, it's, it is environmentally friendly, it's not, it's a non-toxic deal, and it's not any, like, we had to close the cemetery for a week, that's not how it works.
They have to post it.
Tom?
I think Rick has a good point, seeing as it's town property, I think it should fall under the, uh, building repair, maintenance, et cetera, et cetera, category, and that it should come out of the, that account, or at least the selectmen's account, because,
we don't have a slush fund either.
Well, you know, in the past, they've found money, maybe because of the atmosphere of the way things are, maybe they can't find it, but, um, in the past, um, there's ways, I think, that it could be found.
Sure. Thank you. Oh.
To vote on, um, do we need the insect problem to let it at the cemetery?
Well, I don't think they need a vote.
I think they're asking, I think they're asking the approval of the board to go forward with the treatment.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we allow it to go through under all the guidelines appropriate.
Second half. Uh, motions being seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion moved.
Your comment.
Thank you.
Policy on appointments, at our last meeting, we had a first reading on the, was reading the question of, of issues that we had with, um, removing committees or not reappointing committee members for cause, and I've made one adjustment to it, which is to amplify a question, a part of it, where it said, violation of state or town statutes, um, there are three major statutes that apply in this case, the conflict of interest law, the open meeting law, and the public records law, and all I've done is added them in, so it says, chapter 268A, the conflict of interest law now, including but not limited to, chapter 268A, the conflict of interest law, chapter 30A, section 18 to 25, the open meeting law, and chapter 66, the public records law. Just so we're clear, that those are the major ones that are meant to be familiar with, it's the ones that the town clerk gives people the packet when they get sworn in, but, um, just when we were looking at it, we thought we wanted to make sure people were clear about the key ones that we're talking about. Other than that, it's the same, the last time, so.
This can be at any time during the year, just not, not just at appointment time?
That's right.
May I have a copy of those MGLs, numbers?
Yes. Do you want to write it down, or you've got a pencil? Yep.
Have you got a copy there?
268A. That's the conflict of interest law.
That's the conflict of interest.
Okay. 30A, section 18 to 25.
18 to 25?
18 to 25, section 18 to 25 of that act, that's the open meeting law. And then chapter 66 is the public records act.
The whole thing?
The whole thing.
Because you know I've had a problem with that, with my committee.
Right. That's part of what.
You know, you were at my last meeting.
Part of what has sparked the board to put this together has been a concern with your situation.
Well, I would make a motion that we adopt this as the updated version for the policy on removal of committee members.
Second half. Uh, motion made and seconded, all those in favor, are there any questions?
I'll second it. Yeah, she's.
Whatever it takes.
Okay, so motion seconded.
And get a war on every meeting.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion moved.
Thank you. Okay, next up is committee appointment, it's come to our attention that we might have skipped somebody at the last meeting, or a couple of folks, so.
Who was right?
Couple of committee appointments, or employee appointments, sometimes it happens.
No, I brought it up at the last meeting.
So.
And I copied it for you for tonight, too.
So here? We try, we try to make good on these things, sometimes when we make a mistake, I know.
I, I know that there's supposed to be another committee member at large on my committee, and I don't know if that's been addressed or not.
It will be tonight.
It will be tonight.
Well, it might have somebody that'd be interesting, interested.
Well, we won't be meeting until later on.
Well, as I figured.
In the year, anyway, with my committee, the way that it works.
I thought mine was to see who might be interested.
But there are three members from three different boards, the boards need to appoint so that you can put them on my committee, too. You're aware of those three.
Right.
Thank you.
Is that the only one?
There's planning board, finance committee, and, and you already appointed one from your board.
I have also one firefighter appointment, we were looking, Rob Smith, and when we were cutting and pacing, somehow, and I apologized to Rob, we neglected to include him in firefighter appointment till June 30th of the coming year, so I would ask the board to appoint him now.
Who was that?
Rob Smith, Robert Smith.
I make a motion that we appoint Robert Smith to the end of the year as a firefighter.
Second half. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
I was trying not to. No, I make a motion to have him appointed hopeful.
Second half.
I don't have to say, the chairman, she can, they can organize it.
Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. So moved, you're back, thank you very much for all the years.
Make up the time.
All the years?
All the years, all the years, how many?
I became, 2,000.
That's what I was saying, since the beginning, it's a lot more than 19.
So this'll be your 20th year, this'll be your 20th year then, on this committee.
And probably 20 years before that on various others.
Well, it was 46.
I guess so people realize how long it's been.
Memorial Day was 46 years, so come on, I haven't reached that yet.
Let's see. Next item on the agenda is discussion about special town meeting. At the last meeting, there was a request of the board to consider scheduling a special town meeting. They do have a draft warrant for the board to take a look at, that included some of the items that we talked about briefly at the last meeting. Draw your attention to just a couple of the articles here, one article, is anybody from the library here, oh, there, Karen.
I knew you shouldn't have come in. I didn't know.
Article one is, um, the article that was proposed by Ruth, that was given, given into us, and has been converted into a warrant article. Article two is to correct a couple of errors from the annual town meeting, where we found out afterwards that the numbers were incorrect, so we would be adjusting the highway payroll, and I saw Rick come in a little while ago, there he is, standing in the back, and the library payroll number, um, so that would be corrected in article two. Article three deals with the finance committee, article four deals with the, um, request from Cassie about limiting the number of marijuana establishments. Article five, um, deals with a recommendation from council about how to do, how we handle two-thirds votes, um, that we don't, under the current rules, the standard rule is that we have to do a standing count, when we have a two-thirds vote, um, this would allow us that we would not have to do a standing count unless the voters, seven voters requested it, that the moderator could just declare it the way we do with others, he would still require other counts as usual, so let me think, that's one, two, three, or five, that's it.
Did you state a date for that?
Um, I have not, that's up to the board to discuss tonight, so, those were the items, and this just came in just before the meeting from council. Were your consideration?
Yeah, so, I mean, I certainly want to have time to read through this, wait for questions, we're gonna discuss this from the first place, okay? So I, I need, I want time to read through this and study this, um.
I have a question.
So, I've written down all the dates, all, every Wednesday between now and actually through August, so I thought maybe we should, and I'm sorry, Terry's not here, see when we're setting up our timeline, when we're all gonna be here, it is summer, people are on vacation, so we can plan around all that stuff.
Council said that he is available.
Yes, and council.
Um, except for. August 7th and 14th, he will not be available, other than that, he's available all the other Wednesday nights until then, and presumably after that, that's.
Well, that works for me, I don't think, I guess 15th, so. How are you looking, John, we'll have to get Terry's, anyways, that's just something to take into consideration. We need to, um, look over the, uh, limiting marijuana establishments by law, and, uh, we can probably review that and discuss it at our next meeting, so we can schedule a public hearing, um, we need to meet with FinCom, and I know, Tom, is it July 13th you have a meeting?
Well, my question is, I am unaware of what that article is.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we need to meet with the FinCom, whether at one of our meetings, or at their meeting, um, because I also had a question on the final numbers from town meeting, how, um, if it's reflected the change to the school budget line, um, the override monies, at the time I had written down, is there room in the budget now to fund the library for certification, so we don't have to take it out of this, is there money in the budget to maybe do the insect, so I have a lot of questions that FinCom needs to, um.
But I, I. The short answer about the money in the budget is that the money that was appropriated exceeded the actual individual items, the money that the finance committee called out at the end, was more money than the sum of the programs.
Right.
And they're by about $18,000.
Okay.
So there's enough money in that to pay these two items.
Right, so does that have to be recertified, maybe, Tom, can the number need to be recertified?
Again, you know, what's the article reader, is there no article in reference to the wording, number one, and number two, I'd be careful in reference to, if you're talking about $18,000 in terms of the override, I'd be concerned about, that money has already been voted by the people for education, and using for an override, I would question just saying, oh, there's $18,000 extra, we're gonna.
Okay, let me, let me deal with the override question to start with, the override is not going to be used at this point. We appropriated more than enough money by about $2,000, more than what our current contribution to the school department is. So we are covered with the current raise and appropriate number, there's no need to use that override figure, so we will not be used, and it's not available for other things, because it was voted for an override for the school department. The $18,000 is an error in the calculation that was done on the floor at the town meeting by the finance committee, when they were trying to calculate all the different changes, subtractions and additions, and they added it up to be more, $18,000 more than what the actual total was, in the heat of the moment. After the meeting was all done, when it was an opportunity to go through, without being under the pressure of trying to get everything done quickly, we were able to find, oh, okay, it's a, this, the amount actually that those individual items comes to is $18,000 less than the total, but we use the individual numbers. So, nobody got an extra $18,000, in other words, we use individual line items. That just means that that final total, that $18,000 won't be used for anything. When we do the recap, we will use the correct number.
Oh, you'll have.
Does that answer some of your question?
Well, I think the bottom line in terms of my, suddenly my hair on the back of my neck stood up, was in reference to the atmosphere in the town right now, I just didn't want the FinCom to be turned into some kind of a, oh, I don't know, witch hunt, I guess, for the lack of a better word? You know, my last FinCom meeting was, if I knew it was gonna turn into the way it was, I would have canceled it.
I would have stayed home, too.
Personally, personally, again, I'm not even talking about being a member, um, I just felt that, uh, the FinCom had been set up, and I'm glad I'm able to say that publicly, but, uh, you know, when I hear an article now that says just FinCom, I personally wanna know what's going on, what the FinCom would be walking into at our next meeting, and, you know, is there gonna be some kind of a trap, for the lack of a better word, and I appreciate your expounding on that, Kevin.
The trap.
Ruth? Okay. Knowing, what I do know about the finances and the FinCom, I do know there was money left to raise and appropriate, so we can raise and appropriate up to our levy limit, so we still have room, so these could be raise and appropriate articles, we don't remember the exact figure, but I know it was only a couple grand here and a couple grand there.
Yeah, it was less than, for the library, it was a little over a thousand, yeah, so.
Yeah, so there's enough room for raise and appropriate, so to not muddy the waters and reflect on the annual, it's just new raise and appropriate, because we have not set a tax rate yet, and it was more money that could be raised and appropriate.
So we can think about if we want to enter our full sub- batch.
Many of us came to this meeting thinking it was gonna be a direct follow-up on the discussion from last week, I'd like, just like to present, you have a petition to ask you to act quickly on that Ruth French's particular amendment, so I didn't hear that added on here yet, we have 45 signatures, most are not here, many are.
So.
Number one is my amendment.
Yeah, it's not quite right, because we're already talking about changing wording in there a little bit, so, and just so, you know, so.
I gave it to Greg, so what's that?
Did, Ruth, were you gonna continue, did you have anything?
No, that's all I was getting, I know.
May I make the suggestion as to add to that warrant to cover the cemetery problem?
Yeah, I did, we, we just talked, we just said that, we can maybe raise and appropriate that, too. Tom?
You need it.
I. Go ahead, Rick, then I'll go.
No, he wasn't raising his hand to talk, I don't think, were you gonna say? Oh, you were, okay, you want Rick to go first?
Yeah, let him go first.
Go ahead.
All right, what I would like you to do is read that article, because there probably some people.
The article, which article?
Why everybody's here, at school.
Well, it's what Ruth's was, it was, um, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to petition, the Narragansett Regional School District to amend the Narragansett Regional School District agreement by deleting the current section 12 Assignment of Pupils and replacing it with the following, students in kindergarten through grade five shall attend schools in their town of residence, except as herein provided, the school committee may determine by a majority vote to assign kindergarten through grade five students to schools in a town other than their own town of residence under the following circumstances, one, in the event of an emergency which prevents use of a building in whole or part, or two, a student in question requires specialized education or accommodation for a disability that prevents the student from attending a school in the student's town, and the parent or guardian of the student approves the assignment. Parents may request attendance in any of the membered town schools through the so-called school choice program, subject to approval of the superintendent, or act in relation to it." That's how it reads.
And that this, that student enrollment is as of October the 1st, where it's always been, is that what you're talking about?
There's nothing about student enrollment.
Yeah, this is just, this is basically saying that Phillips and.
I was thinking that.
So is that the article you want? So is that the article you wanted to hear, Tom? You wanted, you wanted to announce it. Tom wanted what I thought on FinCom.
Well, my question is, I'm done with the FinCom, I'm satisfied. And I said what I wanted to say. My other question was, is, I was under the understanding that someone else had put in for an article to be put on the special town meeting. Dan?
About what?
I haven't seen, the only one I knew before tonight was Ruth, so, well, we knew about the large one, but other than that, so...
Dan dropped something off today, and it came too late to get it to town council. So, I mean, we can give it to him, but it's not in the form of an article at this point.
So I'm quite sure that Dan probably needed it to be, pardon the expression, prettied up to become an article? And that, that's, you know, I'm listening, I go, wait a minute. Everybody should have a chance.
Well, we should vote to have a special town meeting, we haven't done that, right?
We can vote to have a special town, should we vote for it now? I mean, we know we're gonna have one, but we don't know, we need to, I would think, notify all, if we're gonna have a special town meeting, notify all departments and boards to see if there are any of the warrant articles. You said you've already gotten one and it's being looked at, right? Let the public know there's going to be one, and, so I'm not sure, we could, do we want to set a date when we're gonna close the warrant?
Yeah, you should.
Yeah, and I mean, that's a, so, is it necessary to...
You start with when you want to have the meeting, and then we're fired from that.
Yeah, we're fired from knowing when that's going to be, as well as, we need to have the post-hearing, we need to have a hearing on bylaw, right? So that won't be until...
Last year you had the meet, you had the special in September.
So, our next meeting is the 10th, so we can post the public hearing at that point, so that could be... I mean, do you want to meet every week? Do you, how do you, again, that's why I want to know when people's vacations are, if people were going to be gone, so we can plan those things. And then we can, and then we can, I would think if we close the warrant by the 20th, July 24th, does that make sense? It gives everybody time, we can have time to get the public hearing. We can have time to get the public hearing in, any other warrant articles that people might need in and approved, does that sound reasonable?
So what would the 20th be?
We could close the warrant. We could close the warrant. So all articles that are gonna be on the special town meeting are in. Is that fair?
So what about the meeting day? I guess then that leaves...
Well, then, it has, the warrant has to go to town council to be approved. So it depends when it comes back, and then it has to be signed, right?
Right, well, council's looking at these, so he's happy with these, so, all right.
But we've already added some, but we've added some. All right, we've talked about raising and appropriating.
No, that was, that was in here.
It's already in there?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah, then the issue of the, yeah, top of the page, the money for the library and the highway to cover your budgets.
Well, library, but I'm also talking about the insect. The cemetery, if we're gonna put the cemetery on there. So then it has to be posted for two weeks? So if we close it the 24th, sign it if it's all set. One town council can't, he can't come the 7th or 14th, so you might have to go up to the 21st. I don't...
21st of what?
August, I don't... But seven, but, we can't rush people, it all has to be approved by town council, it has to be posted for a certain amount of weeks. There are rules and regulations we have to follow.
And I realize that, okay? What I'm asking, because that kind of was why I asked you to meet tonight, because what I was really kind of hoping was that you would actually open and close the warrant tonight, which isn't happening, so that's okay. But you've got one more article to maybe add, all right? Which won't take any time for the town council to approve it. You've got a public hearing, now if next Wednesday at your selectmen's meeting, you have your public hearing, that covers bylaw, the possible bylaw change, you could open and close your warrant at next week's meeting. Because pretty much everybody's, I mean, it sounds like you all agree that you're gonna have a special town meeting. We are only asking that you schedule it sooner rather than later. So if you close it next Wednesday, you post it for your two weeks, and you could have it, because it doesn't have to be a Wednesday night, it could be a Monday night. So you could, I mean, I don't have a calendar right in front of me.
Two, two weeks from next Wednesday is July 17th.
Okay, so you could have it the Wednesday of July 17th, even if you moved it to Monday, July...
15.
15 to 20th, that would be after that.
The Monday, the Monday after that. That's what we're asking, is that you actually get this in July, because...
I understand that, I understand that. But the earliest would be the 31st, I can't see us doing it, I'm not rushing. We're the ones that put our names on this, and I am going to understand what I'm doing before I sign anything.
I understand that, and with the actions of Terry, I would really like it that it be possible that you don't schedule, then don't schedule a meeting tonight and do it next, next week. But also be prepared if John and Terry vote to do it, I will go.
And that's fine, I will vote, I'm not opposed to this, I'm just saying.
I know, you don't want to do it until August.
No, I will do it in July, if I have had time to read everything.
But you'll close it in July but won't have a meeting until late August? Is kind of what you were saying.
No, it could be closed on the 20th, no, because it still has to be gone, two weeks. I will have to look at the, I have to look at paperwork first.
I understand, I'm just asking then.
I was just given this warrant today, I didn't know half of the articles that are on it. I am not gonna sit here and study it today and tell you that I will close the warrant next week, or we're not going to be here next week, our next meeting is the 10th.
Okay, on the 10th, that amounts to the possibility.
We can consider that.
All right, thank you, that's all, that amounts to the possibility that you could close it, open it and close it on the 10th.
Need me to write the other...
Unless you want to be.
Karen?
There is a possibility of not doing the bylaw change on the amount of marijuana stores at this time, and leaving that for fear of the date in the fall, because then you wouldn't have to have a public hearing and all those things, and you could move forward more quickly with the other things that are on.
That's a good idea.
Well, that's possible.
It's a very good idea.
Give me two years before they have the pot shop going.
There were as many people, there were as many people at the informational meeting for the marijuana as there are here. And they want to be heard, too, and we promised them that we would have this bylaw ready for the special town meeting. We are talking two weeks.
Do you feel the marijuana issue is more important than the school?
Yeah, there you go.
This is a public meeting.
Right.
And does not mean we have to accept comments or questions, and you will be recognized to speak. Nobody's going to be yelling out questions anymore. You raise your hand and you get called on. And we're not, we've been through this, right now, we are talking about procedure, both special town meeting, we know how you feel, we understand how you feel, and we will do this as soon as possible, but there is procedure that needs to be followed, and there are other things going on, and there are other people that are interested in other things. So, last question, Jim.
Do you think the pot shop is more important than the school?
No, no. But it is still an issue that we have to deal with.
Absolutely, but it's gonna be, honestly, two years before that thing's open. We don't really need to worry about how many pot shops we're gonna allow in the town, nobody else is applying, it's two years before they even can have one up and running. I think that that could probably be pushed off for a couple of months, so we could focus on the school right now, because that's the big thing.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
So what do we want to do with the dates? Do we want to say what... Without Terry here, it's hard to do this.
You could schedule, you've got a couple bylaw pieces in here, you could schedule a date for a bylaw hearing. Are you anticipating other bylaws? You could schedule for a bylaw hearing, and then we should get the advertising done for that.
That's a good suggestion.
So we need two weeks, right?
Not to reach July 10th?
Two weeks from the ad, from the first ad, so, two weeks from the first ad. So we can't, can't do it July 10th, but we could do it sometime after that. We could conceivably...
How many weeks does it have to be posted for?
14 days.
Oh, 14 days.
For an ad for a bylaw change. Week for the special, but for the bylaw change, it's 14 days.
Oh, see, I thought it was reverse, I thought the special town meeting is two weeks, it's a week.
The warrant has to be proposed at two weeks before the special town meeting. But you could set the date anytime and make sure that the warrant is posted two weeks before.
And the public hearing does not have to be a select board meeting, it can be anytime.
Well, again, you just need to make sure everybody can be here.
And the special town meeting, it's cause a special town meeting, so that you can change the parameters. It doesn't have to be at 7 o'clock, and it doesn't have to be on a Wednesday. To be on an, any day, any end, anytime, that the select board chooses.
So you could conceivably get an ad in the paper. Get an ad in the paper on Saturday, or that's kind of tight?
I don't know, you'd have to talk, I don't know.
Monday?
You know better when the newspaper is...
So the early issue could have a hearing would be the 15th. Monday, the 15th. So do you want to do that, schedule a public hearing on the 15th?
We make a motion that we schedule a hearing for the bylaw on June 15th. Don't move my keys, it's usually 7. Sorry. Just in time for the school's main meeting. Well, that's... Sorry.
So motions been made and seconded to have a public hearing on July 15th for the amendment. It's an amendment, bylaws. Is there any discussion? Seeing all those in favor, say aye.
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 So, we're talking about...
Schedule the town meeting.
Schedule the town. It should be in there somewhere. Just don't, don't forget to leave it down.
I have a question, shouldn't the new selectman who just came on have an opportunity to review everything before he voted?
No. We review the stuff beforehand. Okay. We get all the stuff beforehand, with notes.
Asked anyways, you two.
Okay. I saw that. I got it.
So. And, do we need a motion to, when do you want to close the warrant? We're looking at these dates, Terry. Well, how about, are you on, are you available, are you not available at any particular time in the next month?
The end of August.
Okay, so July, you're not, you're not gone?
I'm not, no, I'll make myself available, for sure.
All right.
I'm actually gonna be gone in July, but I'll come back.
So what's your pleasure? When do you want to close the warrant?
Yeah, as soon as possible.
You can close it at the time you need, you can close it. You're set to go.
The bylaw's not done? The hearing is not done? Yeah?
The 17th. But you have this, the thing, the, your normal schedule would be the 3rd and then the 17th.
Oh, no, I forgot that, no, I just didn't know we should close it before the public hearing. Yes, yes.
Because you can amend that on the floor, it's just when you're gonna close it.
Sure.
Closing it is, you know, when you're signing.
Can you close it on the 15th? Yes, so we'll close the warrant on the 15th?
If you're gonna use that as a meeting date, yeah.
Well, if that's when we're having the public hearing, right?
Okay.
Does that, is that, is that, is that allowed? I mean, I'm just asking what the procedure is. If it can be done at that time.
I'm trying to get you back on your regular schedule.
All right, so we can close it on the 17th?
That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay, we close it on the 17th, or not the 10th, maybe the next meeting?
No, I think we've got somebody coming at that next meeting, too, and stuff, so, 17th. Get you back on your normal schedule.
Okay. And then, it can be posted then? Or can it be closed and signed at the same time?
If it's ready to go.
If it's ready to go?
Yeah.
So we can do that on the 17th?
Sure.
And that gets it to the 24th, if that's what everyone asks. Does that work? Does that work, Karen?
No.
No, okay.
No, doesn't work.
No, you need to, in order to have the vote happen in July, the town meeting to happen in July, you would have to move it up to the 10th for the warrant to be opened.
Because you need two weeks to advertise?
Yes, you need two weeks to post the warrant, so you can't have the warrant ready for posting on the 17th, you gotta add 14 days to that.
So...
So you would be into August.
So...
It's whatever you guys want, I'm just telling you.
Yeah.
Two weeks is the 31st from the 17th. July 31st? Well, we can, we can discuss it, we can talk about it on the 10th if we want it, we can close it then, right? We don't have to set that date right now? Have a chance to peruse everything?
You can check it again.
Yeah.
The ad does not include the warrant verbatim, it just says, this is the date of the meeting, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Newsroom.
So do we need a vote to have inspected it?
What? A special meeting?
You can tentatively, if you want to. You could say, you're setting it tentatively for the, whatever, 24th, for the date.
Well, I had made a motion that we have a special town, I mean, I guess we just didn't have the date.
Right.
So, I make a motion that we schedule a special town meeting for July 24th.
It sounds like that's as soon as we can have it, so I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Okay.
Oh, we didn't vote to close the warrant, you didn't vote to close the warrant?
Who did that happen to, let's schedule that.
You don't have to do it tonight, to let people know? Like other boards, I don't know, somebody may have said, I'm thinking more, the treasurer and the accountant, too, if they have anything they need addressed.
Close it on the 10th?
Yeah.
So, should we make that motion?
Well, I'll make the motion that we close the warrant on the 10th of July.
Seconded.
And that's when it will get posted, yeah, but...
Great, perfect. That works.
Has closed on the 10th?
Yes.
That was a motion.
Close on the 10th.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion made and seconded to close the warrant on July 10th, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Set a date?
HCA documents. HCA documents. Next item.
Yep.
At the last meeting, we had received, we had our original policy on marijuana facility host community agreements to consider. And we also had our original template for a host community agreement. And then we had two other templates provided by town council. One for cultivation and one for retail facilities. I suggest we start with the policy document first, because that was, we only have one of those, so we don't have to choose.
Well, not the, he's looking at the policy. Policy, so then there's three, three CAs.
The policy has not changed.
My only question was, does this get handed out or? Anybody who applies?
That's everything that we're talking about.
I make a motion that we accept this-
Assumptive, I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to accept the draft policy for marijuana facility host community agreements. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Now, as far as the host community agreements. We sent a copy, or I sent a copy of the comprehensive one that we put together, which is a little bit more comprehensive than the one that Katie sent back to us. And what she did is she sent back these two and said, well, you know, yours is good, you guys, but these are two that I wrote that are, you know. I don't have to read yours as much if you use mine.
Right.
So what did she say about us?
She said, yours is good, but, you know, I don't have to read yours if you use one of mine.
So what does that tell us?
Fine, basically, there's nothing wrong with yours, these are some alternatives if you want to use one of the others. And, you know, as I'm saying, ours is a bit more comprehensive.
There's more legal ease.
Yeah. Hers is a little more legal easy and, you know, it's got more whereas and whereas and whereas sort of stuff into it. Ours covers things like if payments are late and so on in there. Hers has got some things in here about that, that don't actually apply to us. You know, some things in there about, you know, water and sewer companies and some other issues that we don't, that don't work for us. So we would need to, to edit those out.
I was going to say, that was one of my comments.
Yeah, you know, water and wastewater controls and things like that.
Couple of times, yeah.
And then it leaves out some other things that we had added in. So it's really, it's your choice. I thought that we had done a good job with the one that we used and we were using, you know, what was already cleared by council, so.
So do we need three separate ones, Kevin?
No, I don't think we do, I think we-
One for retail, one for cultivation?
No, no, we can use the one that we started with. She's just offering these to say, you know, these are also-
So the title of ours would, because right now it says medical.
Yes, and we would just say, change it to say retail or whatever.
Okay.
Again, you know, it's a template. So when we get a specific project that comes in, we will go through and make sure that it matches up, if there's some change that we want to-
And there's still negotiation to happen, absolutely.
We will go through and make those adjustments to it.
So I would make a motion that we adopt ours as the template.
Yes.
And just move forward from there.
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, I had one more question, I was in the air. That was, it was number 14 in the, I think it's the cultivation. It talks about, in the event the company has not secured a final license and certificate of registration from the CCC and all necessary local permits from the town for both adult use and medical marijuana operations and commensurate with adult use and medical marijuana operations at the facility within two years from this date the agreement takes effect. The agreement shall expire and it shall have to renegotiate any agreement. So it's saying that this is good for five years, but only if, are they required to open retail, adult use in medical marijuana within that timeframe?
Yeah, it's giving them two years to get set up. The agreement is overall is good for five years, you've got two years to get started, to get underway. It's not five years from the date you open, it's, this is saying five years from the date we sign.
I just didn't know if that was anything that needed to be in ours.
Well, ours is five years from the date they open. The clock starts when they actually-
Right, and they need everything in order to open.
I'm just saying, if it sounds, I read that to be, if you first start with cultivation. Why isn't that, does that just stay good for five years or do you have to open? Something else with it, that's how I read it.
Okay, so we didn't, no, we didn't.
Oh, so, motion made and seconded, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor adopting our post community agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Template.
Aye.
Craig Toohey here. Yeah, this is Craig.
And chairman members, at the, we received a notice from the ABCC that when they went through, as you know, we, the board approved the license transfer for the King Philip. And when it got to the ABCC, as they went through it, they noticed that we had not approved the trans, the pledge of inventory for the project. We approved pledge of collateral, the pledge of licenses collateral. We didn't approve pledge of inventory, which they had asked for, which is a check off. Needs to be in there. Otherwise, everything else was approved and there was some paperwork that they were supposed to submit that we were supposed to see, which was being sent on and then being sent to the ABCC as well. So they asked us to re-sign the documents. So I have the Form 43 here again, and I was going to ask the board just to take a confirmatory vote of their decision that to approve the license transfer with the pledge of inventory. They did ask to make sure, I think the attorney Peterson, right, your attorney, had asked to make sure that the patio area was listed on there, but it was listed on there in the original documents, so. You're covered, basically. It was there before, it's there now. That hasn't changed. So I'm just asking the board to take that confirmatory vote for them and will send this on to ABCC.
I make a motion that we continue on with this, sign this. May I include the-
Yes, I agree.
The motion is made and seconded to sign the pledge of inventory for Craig Toohey. All those, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Isn't this amen wrong? Amen wrong?
No, but this one came by. I was using the same pen, I thought it was important.
Other than that, I think the minimum of the cost is, a, I'm waiting a change order on the- Later on, I thought that'd be interesting to keep. So I'm waiting to hear back from them on that and I will present it to the board later to get those signed off. But there was additional abatement work that needed to be done and I approved those. There were some other amounts and we have funding for that, so I said, they needed to get it done right away.
Sure.
Got to get it done, the guy standing there.
Yeah, right.
Otherwise, we have to reapply for licensing, so. Okay, please do it. Other than that, I think some folks are probably looking to go off, or maybe they've already gone off to the school department. Other than that, I think we're good. The next meeting is July 10th. See, we got a change get to go on vacation.
We were leaving now.